...many years of service. And so, we have had some interest in filling this position. We have had some context. So, what we have decided to do is that anybody living in Ward Three that is interested in the position, they will submit a resume and/or a letter of interest, some type of cover letter, to our city clerk, to Roxy by noon on Friday, August the 26th. And then after that time, there will be some type of selection. At this point, we had several people ask about it. So, we will then have some type of selection process and get somebody appointed to the position as quickly as possible. So, once again, we thank Rick for all of his service over the years. We will move to item number six, which is the consent agenda. And there are three items, and they are routine and enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member so requests. They will include: Item A, approval of minutes from the August 1st, 2022 meeting; Item B, payroll ordinance 5376; and Item C, purchase order ordinance 5377. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, we'll ask our city clerk to please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Forewin?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you to our clerk. Motion passes. And we will now move on to item number seven this evening.
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. And we will move to item number eight, planning and zoning. And Jordan, I have noticed, is very faithful. He always has a report. Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So, planning and zoning last met on Tuesday, July 26th. It's a regularly scheduled meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, September 27th. That's my home report.
Well, thank you for attending to my meeting.
Questions for Jordan? Seeing no questions, thank you, Jordan. Okay, we will now go to item number nine and ask our city administrator if there's any old business at this time.
There is not, Mayor.
No, no old business. We will move to item number 10, which is new business. And we will begin with item A, which is the Western Area Power Administration Integrated Resource Plan, which you will recognize that we were introduced to this at the last meeting. And we'll introduce Lucas. Are you going to, Lucas, our Assistant City Administrator?
Evening, Mayor and council. This was brought as a draft at the last meeting. There were changes to the table on page seven. Some estimated figures were recalculated, changed by a few percent, but not dramatic. We have done this over two meetings because there's an expectation from the Western Area Power Administration that there's the ample opportunity for public comment. We've not received any public comment either at our meetings or intervening, but certainly have given the opportunity. And so, the recommendation would be a motion to adopt the WAPA five-year integrated resource plan as presented.
Thank you, Lucas. Are there questions for Lucas, our Assistant City Administrator?
The only question I had on was on program description. For some reason, I was scrolling through and I saw that said we had seven customers with solar generation. That says four residential, two commercial, which is six, not seven. Page 11. I assume that that's because something's just maybe one person has two locations of it or something. I don't know.
Thank you, Chris. And I would amend the recommended motion then to be as corrected. If that's...
No problem. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lucas. Any further questions to Lucas? Okay, seeing no further questions. Thank you, Lucas. And I want to point out our Assistant City Administrator, Lucas, and our Public Works Director, Chris, have done a great job on this and provided the right amount of information in a format that was understandable. Thank you both. Counsel, is there a motion to adopt the Western Power, Area Power Administration five-year integrated resource plan?
I make the motion to approve with the amendment that page 11 is modified to reflect the current amount of solar generation.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion. Do we need a roll call vote on this?
This wouldn't be an expenditure of funds, correct?
That's...
No.
Probably not, just to bring up...
Yeah, it's not positive. Yeah, you could just do it by a roll call vote.
Okay. Of course, I've now wasted as much time as... Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes appear to have it. Ayes do have it. Thank you. We will now turn our attention to item B, the substation transformer. And I will call on Chris Lindholm, our Public Works Director. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening.
Mayor, council.
Bring before you this evening the two bids that we had on the bid request that were sent out after the June 20th council meeting. As you notice, this conversation has been going on for better part of a year now, almost, addressing the fact that the current transformer is getting old. We've had some unexplained issues with it. It's approaching peak loads. And as town grows, this is going to further tax the capacity of this transformer. So, the bids, requests that were submitted to you were specifications for transformers and were sent out. They were sent out to two companies, Virginia Transformer and Sunbelt Solomon. They came back with what was included in their specifications, what they met, what they didn't meet, costs included. And they were relatively close. Their Virginia Transformer is a brand-new transformer. Sunbelt Solomon is a remanufactured transformer. And there are a couple other items on there that make the Virginia a better transformer as well. Tonight, I have Mike Schmader with KMEA Midstates here, who worked on these specifications. And Ila Shaggy, the electric superintendent, is here. So, if you have any questions about those, they'll be more than happy to answer those. The one important, or two important points I want to emphasize again on this, this project and the importance of this project. If we add a second transformer, we're adding redundancy to the system. With one transformer, if that transformer goes out, we're completely without power throughout the whole town. So, this will add that redundancy. And this is a 55-year-old transformer. Some of the numbers from some of the testing are not super alarming, but a little concerning. So, that kind of added to our concerns with this. The other part of that is the wholesale distribution service charge. If something were to happen to this transformer, our current WDSC charge of $555 a month would probably go to well over $9,000 a month. Plus, we would be looking at an outage while that transformer was replaced. That could be 12 to 24 to 48 hours, depending on locations, logistics of getting crews here, getting this taken care of. So, there are some concerns with that. So, that again is one of the important factors in this whole equation. That transformer is scheduled to be replaced 2026, somewhere around there, if nothing's done. So, even if we don't do anything and they do come in and change it at that point, that WDSC charge will go up astronomically. So, this is part of the process of putting this together to ensure reliability for the community. And it adds a redundancy. Part of this, we looked at, do we just add a completely new transformer, a larger size? And when we discussed this and looked at it, having two transformers in place actually is a better way to go because of the redundancy factor. So, right now, we're looking for a motion to approve the bid from Virginia Transformer for the purchase of a substation transformer for $616,730 plus tax.
Are there questions for Chris?
You mentioned in here that one of the advantages for Solomon is the lead time is less. What kind of lead time are we talking about?
Lead time for Virginia Transformer was, let me make sure, 10 weeks short, yes.
Okay.
Oh, Solomon is shorter.
Solomon is shorter than...
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
That's what I heard you say.
I did notice they had suggested spare parts and so on. Is that anything that we'd want to lump into this purchase at this time?
The important spare parts, I believe, were included. They are included for the Virginia Transformer.
Perfect. Awesome.
To the value of just under $10,000, comparable to Solomon's price.
Further questions? Chris?
I have a question. I'm not sure what, I don't know whether it's for Chris or from a budget perspective. But so, is this an expense that we would consider typical from the Electric Reserve Fund? This is why we have an Electric Reserve Fund?
Yes. And David, you're more than welcome to chime in. But yes, I mean, it's to protect us. An amendment to something like this is there to back up our system and provide for us for things such as this. And you'll notice that the power cost adjustment rider will be adjusted to kick back the reserves over the next eight years. So, we'll still be building that up over the next several years.
The other reason that we have an Electric Reserve is we do not fully ensure our electric system. So, if we were to have a catastrophic... That takes everything out. That gives us the ability to be able to rebuild the system. So, that was done on purpose. We don't ensure the entire system because we have these reserves.
So, then are we in a vulnerable position from that perspective over the eight-year period while ruling it back? Or do we have a sufficient, will that leave a sufficient balance in the reserve fund?
We could be potentially a little bit more, a little bit more, obviously, than if one was there.
Yeah.
And that's why we discussed determining where we wanted to be at as far as the power cost adjustment, how, if we could recreate that fund. If we needed to, though, it's no different. Basically, we're borrowing from ourselves is what we're doing. So, if we needed to bond it or do something in that sorts, we would have that availability also if we ever needed to do that.
So, after this expenditure, and then I believe there's another one coming out of the same fund further in the agenda. So, after those two expenditures, what will be left in the Electric Reserve Fund?
A little bit over a million dollars.
Thank you.
We are also exploring some of the options that are out there as far as financial grants, loans, and some of that stuff coming down with the new infrastructure deals and so.
Further questions for Chris?
I can make a comment about both of these items. When these upgrades are done, this transformer...
Why don't you come on up quick, please? Thanks.
When this transformer is brought online, the old one repaired, it will be operating both. The substation expansion as far as structure and whatnot. When that's all done, you know, barring any unforeseen items, you know, catastrophic failure in equipment, very few of us, in fact, probably no one in this room is ever going to revisit the substation issue other than general maintenance. So, this is long-term. After the repair of the used transformer, we're going to be in very good shape for a very long time.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Okay, council, any last questions for Chris? Or Chris, any last comments? Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you, thank you guys for your work on this. Counsel, we have a recommendation to approve the bid from Virginia, Georgia Transformer for the purchase of the substation transformer for $616,730 plus tax. Is there a motion? Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is, are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions. Now, Roxy, we didn't roll call. I'm just kidding.
Two as a matter of fact.
Okay, thank you, council. We'll ask the city clerk to please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gavin?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Forewin?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes. And thank you, Roxy. So, we will move forward with item C, which is the Substation Transformer Task Order Number Two. And again, call on our Public Works Director, Chris Lindholm.
Okay, the second part of this, kind of had discussed holding this off a little bit, but there are several items within this project that require or have lengthy lead times as well. So, we felt that it would be best to just start moving forward with this. So, the second part of this project is the task order, which includes and addresses the scope of work and all the additional items to go along with this project. That includes switches, breakers, and structural steel, concrete work, wire, cable, and the labor to take care of this. There will probably be some work started. I don't know when you would anticipate probably starting some work.
We should start ordering equipment right away.
Ordering right away and work fairly soon, I would think, getting bases and stuff.
Yeah, we're going to have to get this concrete done before winter.
All that needs to happen prior to the transformer arriving, when it is completed, so that when it comes, it gets set on place. And then if everything is taken care of ahead of time, it's just a matter of some work to get everything hooked up and do all the testing, and then it'll be ready to go. So, it'll happen relatively quick at that point. But some of these things, as I said, they have fairly lengthy lead times. So, they need to be ordered along with the transformer to make sure that they're onsite, well ahead of the transformer arriving, so they can be laid in place. So, we're just looking for a motion to approve Task Order Two from KMEA Midstates for the items relating to the engineering procurement and construction services for the installation of the second substation transformer for $686,000.
Thank you, Chris. Are there questions for Chris? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have a recommendation before us, which is for a motion to approve Task Order Number Two from KMEA Midstates for items relating to the engineering procurement and construction services for the installation of a second substation transformer for $686,000. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, we'll ask our city clerk to please do a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Bruce?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Forewin?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Vanderweig?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. And thank you, Chris, and all of you guys for your great work on this. These are one of, these are the type of things, infrastructure, that is important. We sometimes, I don't know if we forget, but you'll know it when we don't pad it, when it doesn't work. And it's good to be so, it's great to be this proactive, and we appreciate it very much. Okay, council, we will move to item D, which is a CMB application for the Happy Sweet. And we will call on our city clerk to inform us about that, please.
So, the city has received an application from Happy Sweet for their CMB license for the remainder of the 2022 year. The applications have been reviewed by Chief Davis, and the background checks have been completed. All of the fees have been received. And the one thing I do want to point out, though, is they are looking to have an onsite application or an onsite consumption as well as an offsite consumption. So, they will be taking sealed containers like you would if you were at a gas station. It's only beer, cereal malt beverage. So, they're looking for two licenses. So, we are looking for a motion to approve the Happy Sweet application for a cereal malt beverage license for 2022.
Are there questions for our city clerk? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Roxy. We have a recommendation before us, council. Motion to approve Happy Sweet's application for a cereal malt beverage license for 2022. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some moved.
A motion? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
I was going to say, we clearly want the Happy Sweet to be happy and all the beer, so.
Or the people who are there to be happy, right?
Okay, thank you.
That wasn't just, I swear.
I actually mean that somebody had to say that. You know, we're all kind of thinking in some form, in some form of that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you, council. We will now turn our attention to item E, which is land acquisition at Union Street Parcels. And we'll call on Jordan Erkovich, our Community Development Director. And welcome, Jordan.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. So, just some background. The Community Development Department has identified two parcels of land to help facilitate the strategic development of a range of housing types and prices. To meet the market demand and resident needs of Linsburg is outlined in the Strategic and Comprehensive Plans in the recently updated and adopted Housing Needs Analysis. The two parcels are located on Union Street and are currently zoned R3, multiple-family dwelling district, which means that can accommodate a multifamily development, which is a key undeveloped segment in the Linsburg housing stock. If purchased, the department would be able to utilize the land via private or nonprofit partnerships to facilitate the addition of multifamily units to serve community housing needs with the goal of selling the development upon completion. Of note, this land has remained undeveloped for 31 years due to its location within FEMA designated floodplain. And importantly, this is a bit of a note, and I'll update it. FEMA is currently in the process of finalizing a revised version of the flood insurance rate map, which is called FIRM, in Linsburg. FEMA's preliminary map provisions show that the two parcels of land, which we're talking about on Union, will be removed from the floodplain upon the establishment of FEMA's new FIRM, meaning that these parcels will become developable property without having to acquire additional permits from FEMA and the Kansas Department of Agriculture Division of Water Resources, which is KDA-DWR. Of note to that, I actually received an update since I wrote this agenda item today from KDA-DWR. And they told me that there's an updated schedule for this revised FIRM. So, it was originally supposed to be updated this fall, but due to some transition, both KDA-DWR and also their consulting board, it's actually scheduled out until September 30th, 2024. So, it's two additional years for this FIRM to be updated, which is important because that means that any private developer who's looking at this land will have to deal with two more years of potential floodplain, whereas we have the opportunity through our, through our relationships with, say, like Wilson &amp; Co., to kind of easily process these kinds of applications to KDA-DWR by going through what's called a letter of map provision based on bill or a LOMER-F process. So, anyway, both parcels have recently been offered for sale at a price of $21,000 each for a total of $42,000. The department believes that this land can be utilized for medium-density multifamily housing development that supports the housing needs of either 55-plus years of age or all ages regardless of ability status. This could be facilitated by issuing a request or proposal, say, like a design build form to private developers or through a partnership with an existing nonprofit entity that specializes in housing development. So, just a few additional notes about the property. So, as of 4:00 p.m. today, I spoke with a listing agent, and there are currently no bids on the properties. It's currently in the AE designated floodplain. And just to give you some context, a little bit more about floodplain, this is regulated floodplain with a 1% annual chance of flooding and a 26% chance of flooding over the life of a 30-year mortgage, which is why you have to go through these processes, like a LOMER-F, to get it out of the floodplain if you want to develop in it. And again, this is preliminary, it's scheduled. The map is updated in 2024 in September. I said this kind of quickly earlier, but the lots were originally planted in 1991. So, there hasn't been any development, even though it's been available for 31 years to develop. Nothing has come in 30 years. Housing, housing needs have identified in the adopted comprehensive plan in Housing Needs Analysis, the 2022 update. This states that there's a need for an objective to expand the variety of housing types to support residents of all ages and abilities. That's exactly what this would be intended to do, is to facilitate the development of housing types for all ages and abilities, specifically in the multifamily, moderate-income housing sector, which is underdeveloped. And the process would go something like this, removing the parcels from the floodplain via a LOMER-F process, issuing an RFP for a design build contract. Or if that didn't work, the second option would be partnering with a nonprofit entity. The idea of working with the private entity first and then a nonprofit entity second is that with a private entity, there's the double benefit of we get housing, and also it's private, so it stays on the tax rolls with a nonprofit entity, and they own it. We still get the housing benefit, which the community needs for all sorts of economic development and school enrollment reasons. But we don't get the tax roll benefit of it. So, that would be the, that would be the second option. And then we'd utilize the parcel value potentially as incentive and look to pair with other potential incentives, such as a moderate-income housing grant, rural housing incentive district, low-income housing tax credit, and other potential incentives to attract development here. And then if none of that works, we can always sell the property, which would likely hold value or increase in value, as land tends to hold value or increase over time. So, it's a pretty safe investment. But importantly, I'll say this. This isn't the first time or the last time that strategic land comes available for us to potentially do some kind of housing work with. It represents a good opportunity to try and facilitate housing development, but it's certainly not without cost or risk. Either way, myself and all of us at the city will continue working towards a better housing market to address community needs. market to address community needs regardless of the outcome today. So the last part here. So the recommendation is a motion to approve and offer for purchase of two parcels of land on Union Street, parcel number 059-034-17-0-30-17-003.00-0, and parcel number 059-034-17-0-30-17-001.00-0 at a price not to exceed a total of $42,000.
Thank you, Jordan. Other questions for Jordan?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I just, I'm still fuzzy about this notion of us buying property, then partnering with a private developer. I guess my assumption is the developer does the work, and then we get our money back on sale of the property, is the developed property.
So there's multiple ways this could go. We could, we could set it up that way, where we attract a private developer, and we say, you know, we've gotten this land, and we've taken it out of the floodplain. We have, you know, the last two available are three-zoned parcels in Linsburg where you can do multifamily development, and we'll sell it to you at cost for you to be able to do the development. That's one example. The other potential outcome is if we want to use the cost of land acquisition as incentive, we could also work with a private developer, a nonprofit organization, and say, here's the incentive. We'll gift you this land if you come in and facilitate this kind of housing development. So whatever makes sense at the time, I suppose, to get the right development in the right place. But yeah, that could go either way.
So then you would come back to us to approve the, the sale to a private developer or the incentive piece?
Yep.
So like a nonprofit, is that like a, for like disability housing or something? Or what is a nonprofit that we would work with?
So there's a category of nonprofits called nonprofit housing development corporations. Full disclosure, I sit on the board of one, the McPherson Housing Coalition, but it does not have to be them, and it could be another nonprofit development entity, sort of like the Smoky Valley Development Corporation, for example. And so those entities, they specialize in this kind of development, and they can do a number of things, moderate-income housing, low-income housing, transitionary housing, emergency housing. So a recent example, this is in McPherson, where they're doing a McPherson, or excuse me, an emergency housing development, where families come in for a 90-day period. They have wraparound services. They stabilize, and then they, you know, find a place to live. So there's kind of multiple ways you can go in different, different organizations specialized, I'd say, in different areas of development.
Okay. And then I, I'm sorry, I've never been over this part of town. So is this like behind Peterson Estates? Is that where it is?
So this, this is Peterson Estates. So this was part of that platform, yes. Over on Union Street.
Yeah, that doesn't help me. It's on the backside of it, right? I mean, it's, it's right here, right?
Yep. So what, what I think you would commonly think of Peterson Estates, this was part of that platform. So it's technically a part of it in the original flat in 1991.
That's what I thought, but I didn't trust my math, so.
Yes, please.
What do you know about the property that's in between the two open lots?
I just know it's a fourplex, and it's owned and operated as a rental unit.
Privately owned.
Yeah, privately owned.
Jack Kingsley, I believe. I think he owns those other two properties as well. Is that the current owner of these two properties we're looking at?
It's not.
Jordan, could you, when you, earlier you said that it hasn't been developed. We were talking about these two specific lots, because the fourplex is new, right?
Yeah.
It's newer than 30 years.
Yes, I'm talking about these two.
Okay, those two. Can you have, and you have a garage on the lot to the west?
Yep.
And then I think three houses.
Just three houses.
And, and would you explain a little more about the, you talked about, you started talking about the floodplain and the changes, and did I hear you right, those are going to be delayed further than what we originally thought?
Yes. So the process of updating the FEMA's flood insurance rate map started in 2018 or 2019, and then it got postponed by COVID, and then restarted again last year. They originally thought, the original timeline for updating this map was going to be the end of this year, and there's a whole bunch of regulatory process around this. There's due process and public hearings, and there's a first version and a second version. There has to be a comment period. Basically, the contractor they were working with, along with their own internal organization, went through a lot of turnover. And so because of that, there's been some continuity issues, and they pushed back the timeline two additional years. So that's why the flood insurance rate map isn't due to be effective until it's preliminarily planned for September 30th, 2024, although that could change because if there is, say, for example, an issue with flood mapping, or there's significant pushback on the flood mapping, it could push the process back further, which has happened historically. I think that's kind of important context for this, because if you're thinking about, if you're thinking from a developer perspective, which I'm not a developer, but I speak with a lot of them, oftentimes what they're looking for are easy projects, low hanging fruit, and they're considering cost and obviously return on investment. And so, you know, in the state of Kansas, we're already not a primary market. If you think of primary markets like Kansas City and Wichita for development, and then secondary markets, say, like the bigger towns, like maybe like Salam, Manhattan, DePica, Warrens, we're kind of in that third category space, competing for money. And so on top of that, we're already, we're already kind of hard for investment dollars at this scale, this moderate-income family, multifamily development scale, which is why a lot of this doesn't happen in small towns. Okay, and then you add on top of that having to go through a LOMER-F process, which adds costs and time, administrative burden, just the kind of complexities that any developer really isn't looking to get into. I assume that if this stays, and somebody were to buy it up, that it will stay undeveloped for years to come, at least until it comes out, and then still, who knows, it could be a garage, it could be something else. So again, like I was saying, this isn't, this is one opportunity, and it's not without risk. I think the benefit to acquiring this is we can facilitate some of the administrative stuff around the floodplain on our end, and then actively seek development as opposed to waiting for it to come in, which I think historically has been, except for the past few years, especially with the addition of Stockholm Estates and some of the other development, but I think has historically been the model of housing development, which has been a little bit reactive and less proactive. So this is more of a proactive measure to go out and seek and help to facilitate the development of the housing that is identified in the Comprehensive Strategic Plans and also the Housing Analysis.
I think funding is concerned of these properties would be if you start talking about multifamily, you know, fourplex or something like that. The amount that somebody's going to invest in building that, if you drive along there and you look at that, and you're driving down this dirt, gravel, terrible road, you look at this area, that's just, it's a very unappealing area. It's, it's the two least desirable properties of that whole entire subdivision, and you're going to spend half a million dollars, three quarters of a billion to build a fourplex there? Spend an extra 30 grand on a bare piece of property. That's why I think most people are going to say, especially given the road condition and the fact that sooner or later that road's going to get assessed and improved, and then that's going to be that person's tax responsibility. That's my opinion on it. I, I wouldn't buy those. I'd spend more money and buy a better piece of land myself.
By the same token, what others are available, and particularly in terms of multifamily development?
You have to make something. That's what everybody tells me. Buy this person's house and bulldoze it. I mean, it's something as this, you know, but.
There is precedent recently, so.
Right.
Did, did we not talk about that road somewhat recently? What, what's?
Since I've been here.
No?
It's been talked about in the past, but it's, until the decision is made to improve it and taxes are assessed to the property owners, it's.
You're still, is it, I mean, it gets chip sealed, or what, what's it to make? That's the question.
It is, it is basically a milled, it's a gravel road that has had millings placed over it, and it's maintained that way. That doesn't work out very well, because millings form a road, a hard base, and then there's a lot of potholes in between that you can't repair. So ideally, that road needs to be tore up and then just turned back to a loose millings or gravel road where it can be maintained. But until the decision is made to totally improve it, and you're not only talking about the west side, of course, you're also talking about the east side from First Street on East to Harrison and Cole, so.
Because it is the one, it's the one of the two that they're all the way through, right?
Correct, yes.
So, counsel, if I may, yeah, councilmember Allen, I think that's a, that's a really great point, and I think the point I'm trying to make, which is that the property is zoned correctly and adequately sized, but is not currently conducive or desirable for development, so without active intervention, my sense is that it's going to sit undeveloped.
I agree with that.
But could you, could you set, first of all, thank you, Jordan, for, for scoping this out and bringing it to attention. My understanding is that you are interested in doing a comprehensive, kind of a comprehensive look at what we should be doing as a city. Would that be fair to say?
A comprehensive housing strategy?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Is this premature?
I'd say if this were out of scope or context of the comprehensive or strategic plans, I'd say yes. But because we know that this has multifamily and a range of housing has specifically been named as, as a housing category of need, and because we also know that a larger housing strategy is coming our way, obviously with, with input from council, planning a zoning commission, and everybody involved in this process, I think it will fit nicely into our current policy model for the needs as outlined in our current biggest policy document, which is the Comprehensive Plan, but also going forward the housing strategy as well.
How did, do you know when the fourplex was built?
I don't know when that was built.
And, and why was, why was that just not in the plus?
So, no, my understanding of that is that that was a permitting mistake back in the early 2000s by somebody who I don't know, but who held my position initially. And that should never have been permitted. So apparently, this is the history, as it was told to me through Gary Schubert, my predecessor, FEMA gave the city a lot of flack for that development, because it's actually still sitting in the floodplain, and they didn't go through the right process to get it out. So that was, that was a big problem.
So the whole development, Peterson Estates, not just these lots that we're discussing?
Well, I think we're talking right here, I was just answering about the fourplex, but the history of Peterson Estates is also kind of interesting. I can tell you about that if you'd like.
Well, I just, I, I thought you said the whole development in part of your comments, so.
So I'll give you a Kennedy, a bridge version. It's actually all I know. But Peterson Estates, basically, Cow Creek used to run through what is now Peterson Estates. The developers of that, of that development had to go through the LOMER-F process, letter of map provision based on fill, get all the engineering done, get all the site work done, and get the permits to go ahead and build that subdivision. They built it to the engineered standards, and then the final step in the LOMER-F is you actually have to prove that you did what you said you were going to do to FEMA and the state for it to be revised on the FIRM, the flood insurance rate map. They did everything but that step. And so all of those lots that are actually not really in the floodplain are technically still in the effective FIRM, because they didn't go through that extra step in the 90s to get it pulled out. And so this has been a major problem for that development specifically, because every individual property owner buys a parcel out there, has to go through this process to get it out of the floodplain before they can develop their lot. So the most recent one of that was on South Quirana. It's the one with the, the new solar out there, and they had to go through this process.
Peterson County shows that fourplex was built in 2007.
2007. Okay. And then the garage, and, all right. The, Jordan is, is, and I, again, I appreciate your, your thinking and your future, you're looking towards the future, and I particularly appreciate the fact that you're working on a kind of comprehensive view of this. What would be the downside to not taking action this evening?
Well, I think, it's a great question. I think there's, there's a few. One is that it sits undeveloped.
Well, that's if it sells. I'm just saying, if we take no action this evening, and I, you know, with a possibility of, because it did come up really soon, which that's just how it worked.
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, and for context, this came up last week, which is why this is on the agenda this week. Well, not taking action might mean that somebody else might buy it, somebody who's speculating in the future, who maybe doesn't have, say, like the greater vision of Linsburg housing needs in mind. So it could be purchased, they could hold it for a few years, and then they could put another couple garages on there. That, to me, would be really an unwise use of that name, especially given our need for more affordable, moderate-income housing. And so, so that, that's probably the biggest risk, is the risk of it being sold and losing the opportunity.
I do think multifamily housing is a huge need. I mean, our housing market is crazy that young families can't afford very much, so. So I appreciate you looking forward on that.
So to get some context into the 55-plus idea and all abilities part that I mentioned earlier, so the idea of doing 55-plus multifamily medium-density housing is that it's like a two-for-one bang for your buck, where if you've got somebody in town who's maybe like an active retiree, or an empty nester, or elderly, who's looking to downsize, they generally don't have any options between their house and going to like Bethany Home or Bethany Village. So this would be that middle space for them to get out of their single-family house, which is probably affordable, because almost everything within the center of town would be considered moderate-income affordable housing. So you get them out of their current single-family house, which opens up another house for, say, maybe like a young family with kids to enroll in school districts. So that's kind of the two-for-one. The other option, though, is that you just go where it's not 55-plus, you know, like regulated, and you just do all abilities. And the idea being there that anybody's, you know, a small family or that same category 55-plus could live there, because, you know, if you're young and you have a family, you can live in pretty much any house. You know, you can get up and downstairs, but if you're older, or you're disabled, or maybe you're just not getting around as well, there's only some amount of housing that you can live in. And so this would be sort of an inclusive equity sort of take on housing development, which allows for flexibility and more options.
You're kind of making the assumption, though, aren't you, that they're, well, not making the assumption, but you're, you're giving this kind of a best-case scenario. So how long, if, if the city is to buy, will buy these, when are we going to see a building?
That's a great question. So the first thing they have to do is get it out of the floodplain, which could take maybe six months at the latest, a year. And then we would do an RFP. So I think, you know, you could realistically be looking between one to two years. The alternative, the alternative would be that it sits and it doesn't develop in any, you know, amount of time anyway. So worst-case scenario would be this. We buy the land, we can't get the LOMER approved in time, or there's some issue. We send out an RFP, or maybe we do, and we send out an RFP, and there's no takers for potential housing developers. There's no nonprofit that's interested in developing this land, and so now we're stuck with a parcel of property that, that we purchased two years ago, and nothing's happened. Even in that case scenario, my sense is that that property will hold its value or increase in value over time, just given historic rates of appraisal. So I think the worst-case scenario is we do the thing to, to try and facilitate housing development. We can't do it for some number of unforeseen reasons, but we still have an asset that we could then go. have an asset that we could then go and sell in a number of years. So the goal is not to buy and hold, that's for sure. It's really just to do the administrative work to facilitate housing development on the front end, and then get it, get the housing need filled, and then get the tax benefit on the back end.
So, out of curiosity, I mean, we'd streamline this, hopefully, and stuff would happen, but we're investing time and resources into it when we already have a significant amount of land that the city owns for economic development north of Pizza Hut. And nothing's happened with that in years. Nobody's talked about anything. I mean, I know several people have mentioned being interested in it, and nothing ever happens with it. Is there any interest in possibly playing multifamily there? I know if we go too far out that direction, it requires a lift station, but closer towards Pizza Hut?
So, I, I know, obviously, I know this parcel, and my sense is that it's been earmarked for potentially some kind of hotel or transient sort of guest accommodation. But I don't know the whole history of that, that parcel in particular. But yeah, I don't, I don't think, just, just to say, I don't think that this is, again, the only, this isn't the only good option right now, and not the only good option in the future. So it is an option, and it's one that, that came up recently that I think is, is a pretty good one, and that wasn't available to us before. But certainly, regardless of whatever decision is made, we will continue to look at, say, the parcels we already own, or potential other strategic parcels, to continue to fill the housing need, which is a really big part of, of my position.
I think part of that land out there that you're speaking to is that a lot of that has been looked at within the scope of the K-4 Bridge and the interchange. And so as we look at those potentials, and certainly after the study session last week, there's, there's been a little bit more ground that we've gained on those different projects. And rather than just do this and do that, and, and hopscotch what we might develop there, it's been looking at what we might do within the development of that, the road out to the interchange, or what might fit best there if we remove the bridge, and how that entire area might be developed, and what the best use of that land is, rather than just doing, you know, a small little development of something.
Well, I know part of the discussion, too, was using the dirt from the bridge to raise that area up, so that a lift station isn't required for residential if that would happen. So, down the road, maybe that happens, and that's always all the problems.
I think there's a lot of potential out there. There's just been a little bit of hesitancy because we didn't want to jump onto something that knew what might happen with those future projects. And so, as Jordan mentioned, it, you know, housing might be something that we could do out there, but certainly, you know, this is just an additional opportunity.
So when you said it, it came up last week, I mean, obviously, they've been sitting there for a while, that it was just listed for sale last week.
Yes, yes.
And so my, my thoughts are, you are, I mean, possibly, they could sell, and if we were to delay taking action so that you give people more thought, we run the risk of somebody buys the lots in the next three weeks. On the other hand, if, if, I'm not sure that's all bad, but we're, I, I think this came up very quickly. I think you are done the right thing in, in analyzing it and pointing it out, and, and perhaps the council wants to move forward with this. I'm, I'm just, I feel it's like it, it's one of those, we gotta do it now, and, and I'm not sure that we do, I think, but, I don't know how everybody feels, but it's, it seems like there's a lot to this. I don't want to see the city just getting the point of buying property and holding it, and I know you don't either. But, you know, when we buy it, it comes off the tax rolls, and then it sits there for, these are vacant lots, there's not a lot of taxes, but sits for a couple of years, and, I don't, it's just, we're not in the land purchasing, speculating business as a city. I don't want to see us do that. So I want, I, I guess I want this from the city council to consider this carefully, and if it's, if you feel confident, and this is the time to move forward, you can move forward. But if it's, if you need some more time, I think that's a reasonable choice as well, that can be revisited in the near future. I don't know if you want to comment on that or not.
No, I think it's obviously up to you. This is really just presenting an opportunity that came up. And I certainly feel like, like you said, within the context of a larger housing strategy, where this would be like a tool in the toolkit, say, if it were identified as such, where you could go out and say, hey, a strategic parcel land came available, the city has some funds, ready to go for this, we can facilitate development, this is adopted as, as one of the, the strategies and tools within, within the context of larger policy. I think that that would make this decision much more comfortable, right? Because then it would be, oh, we've already, we've already discussed this potential scenario. So I think, yeah, certainly, you could always wait. There's the risk of it, of it being sold. But that's, that's, I suppose, that's, that's the game that you play with, with real estate and stuff.
I guess my thought of it is, is that you have been researching this for several years. I mean, you've been looking into housing and trying to figure out how to develop it. So it's not, I mean, I get this just came up last week, but this is part of a larger plan that you've been working on, and you think these properties would be a good investment for us, and we're probably not going to lose money on it. I mean, unless land tanks in the next bit, which it's probably not going to. So, it, to me, it's kind of a no-risk thing, so.
Other questions, Jordan? The only question I'd have is, what would annual maintenance approximately be on that? Because obviously, we're going to have to mow it and maintain it until it sells, or move it. I, I guess parks would be taken care of it, or?
Yeah, I think like they do for all of our in-town parcels. So, we also mow the adjacent property, which is that low-lying property to the east, which is where Cow Creek is. So yeah, there's, there's some annual maintenance costs and time in that, for sure.
So what, what kind of time would you need to do some initial, put some initial feelers out for, I mean, I mean, we, we have a current relationship with a developer that's worked with, with, you know, I guess, that's what I'd like to know, like, because I, it, it feels a little sudden to me, although I would agree with Kirsten's comments, that it's not really, because this pretty well fits into a strategy that's been defined. But, and, and I, I, you know, like, depending on what happens tonight, if, if somebody builds a garage on it in three weeks, I'm going to be frustrated, you know, I mean, but, but at the same time, I, I can feel better about it if we had a little more, you know, a little bit of groundwork done on some of the, what the possibilities are. So, so that's, so my question is, what's the timeline for getting a little bit of information on potential development or nonprofit work?
Sure. So I think that the first step before ever even reaching out to a potential developer or nonprofit partner would be to get it out of the floodplain, because regardless, it needs to come out. But that being said, putting out feelers and even writing, you know, a request or proposal with a timeline to be, you know, contingent on, say, a Lomer F process, is really not too hard to do. I work with many of the developers in town because they're always applying for permits, so I have like a pretty good field of potential people to reach out to, as well as there's some pretty good developers in the state. So, I mean, we could put a timeline and say, you know, in a month's time, I can come back and say where we have a Lomer F, and in terms of putting out feelers, has anybody expressed potential interest in our after-division campaign? Obviously, of course, nothing could develop until a Lomer F was applied for and accepted. That way, it could come out of the floodplain. So, so knowing that in terms of, like, there being a shovel underground, it is, it would be contingent on that, which is certainly part of the risk, which is where I would say it's not no risk, there's definitely, there's definitely some risk.
I said low risk, not no risk.
But, yeah, so it's hard to say exactly.
Well, I mean, I, I guess I get that you have to have that to actually close a deal on a developer. But I, I, I mean, if it's truly as, sort of a, just a process that has to be worked through, is sort of how I determined it out to be presented tonight, then it seems like that, that could still be part of the framework of a discussion with a potential build.
Yeah, sure. I think that's a really great point. So it could be, within the scope of our, the understanding that we're going through this process, could you still give us a sense of what you could do, given these parameters, to facilitate our housing need? For sure. So it could be all of them.
How long does it take to get that floodplain issue, you used an acronym that I don't remember, but?
Lomer F, Letter of Map Revision Based on Phil. There's a lot of acronyms in this. Lomer F, K D A D W R, FEMA, so, three to six months typically. So it depends on when you get the site survey and the permit. Fortunately for us, we have a really good relationship with Will's Inc. Co., and this is the kind of stuff they do all the time, is floodplain, engineering and permits. We're working with them right now on Cow Creek. So I think we could leverage that relationship to do this kind of work for them.
So Jordan, then what, what is the difference between that, somebody else buying it, and we're, and we can help, and somebody else wants to develop it, and would be just as quick, or would not, either, are there currently options available to us because we're a city?
No. So, I mean, everybody has these exact same options. I think, I think that the situation I'm presenting is, is that these two parcels, I think, have sat vacant for 31 years for a number of reasons. It could be because of the floodplain, it could be because of the undeveloped road on Minion, it could be because we're kind of in like a third, maybe second-tier market for developers, it could be because, really, it didn't, multifamily housing maybe didn't pencil until recently, you know, maybe with inflation and cost of commodities and labor, things have changed, and there's more of a need for smaller housing now. And so people are looking for those options, as opposed to maybe in the future, where everybody was building single-family residential, which is what we primarily have, it's over 70% of town. So certainly, the, the best-case scenario would be after tonight, somebody, you know, it, the best-case scenario would have been, you know, 30 years ago, somebody saw this, took it and developed it, and you already had something. The second-best-case scenario would have been when this came available a week ago, somebody already bought it, and already had these plans, and did a multifamily development. I'd say, and that would be ideal, because then the city wouldn't have to do anything. The city didn't have to do anything for housing development, and the housing market worked. That would be the best-case scenario. My sense is that the housing market is troubled now, and I'm not saying this isn't really my opinion, this is like based in our, in our housing studies, because the market isn't servicing current demand. And so that's where the active intervention part comes in. I don't think the market is going to come in. And if they do do multifamily out there, I'm not sure it's going to be at a rate that would be considered moderate income and certainly affordable, based on the cost of labor and materials and everything else that goes into it.
That would seem to mitigate against us buying that, then because those same cost factors are in play, and we wouldn't necessarily even achieve our goal of moderate income.
So I think what we have going for this is, one, we have the land, and we can do all of the administrative burden around, like I said, the, the Lomer F, which can take away some of the mental burden, but also some of the cost burden. And we also have the cost of the land itself, the $42,000, which we can bundle together as one package, which might be attractive to a developer to develop at scale. But the other thing that we have, and I said this kind of briefly through, is we have the ability to, as a city, apply in partnership with an organization or developer for other types of incentives, like a moderate income housing grant, or a loan, or a tax credit, something like that, to be able to help subsidize some of these costs. So the city actually does have more tools in its playbook than, say, like a private developer does.
Further questions? Okay, thank you, thank you, Jordan. Council, it would look to me as though if there is, if there is reason to move forward, if there were votes to do that, or desire to do that, that's a possibility. It's also a possibility that there's no action taken this evening with the possibility of reviewing it again in the very near future with possibly additional information that could be requested through our city administrator. So, comments?
So even if we make a motion tonight and it goes down, it could still come back in a month or whatever, to, I mean, it's not like it takes off the table forever, right?
Well, that, you know, that's, it, things can always be revisited, of course, I guess. The, the, and I, and I don't know that necessarily has to be tabled if.
Yeah, that was my question.
And actually, just not.
Question, I have.
You don't, you don't have to take it up.
And then, you know, then it's fully.
So what is the process of tabling a motion? Do we have to then make the motion, and then we have to vote on a motion to table it?
You would table, if you wanted to table it, there would be a motion, a second, and then a vote to table it. I.
But we have to have a motion first.
Well, and to table it, but I think to not take action, isn't it possible to, is it possible just to kind of have a consensus that we're going to not take action?
Yeah, yeah. If the council doesn't want to take action, they don't have to. It's just a matter of administration getting it on the next agenda.
So.
Or a future, and then not necessarily the next agenda.
Exactly.
Well, for me, I, I very much want to pursue it, because I think for 30, if, if somebody wanted to do something with it, they would have done it in the last 30 years. But at the same time, I don't feel like I need to vote on it. I mean, if it was going to fly off the market, it, it probably would have happened in the last 30 years again. So I, so I just feel like it, it's, with the past experience, the, the feedback from the city about, ever from citizens about not, you know, that you sort of alluded to about not acquiring property just for, for the sake of acquiring it, I would like a little more due diligence on, on options and timeline for the development of it. I mean.
And interest.
Yes, yes. And because the other, the other piece of it, I jokingly said, you know, I'd be frustrated if a garage was built on it, you know, if somebody bought it and then built a garage. But that can't happen, can it, with it, I mean, from a planning, from a zoning perspective?
I think at this point, nothing can.
I mean, if somebody bought it, they can't put a garage on it.
Well, yeah, so you have, they could do, they could put a garage on it, but it would be a secondary use. So it, I'm not entirely sure how that current garage got placed on that. Again, I'm not sure how the current fourplex is there.
Exactly.
But yeah, so generally, you have to have a primary, secondary use, garage is a secondary use.
So I mean, the point would be that, the only thing that we would be missing out on by this point in this is that someone else would buy it for the same purpose, because that's how it's currently zoned, right? I mean, and is that correct?
Or three?
And I guess my question is, so explicitly, what more information do you need? What do you think in a month is going to change on information that Jordan's going to be able to bring back, or are we going to be able to make a different decision? I want to hear, for me, I want to hear that he reached out to some developers, and they said, yeah, that sounds interesting to me, and not, he reached out to everyone he knew, and no one was interested. If he reaches out and says, hey, you know, would you be interested in developing this in, under this scenario, and he hears from no one, that, that's, to me, that's like something that says, the city is going to, yeah. And I, I personally don't necessarily anticipate that. I think this is probably a pretty sweet deal, if the city acquires it and all of the, all the potentials. But I, I just don't, I don't want to, I don't, I don't think, I don't see that there's any reason why we have to vote on buying it tonight. I mean, that, it doesn't feel like it's going to fly off the market in the next month, without the answer to any of those questions.
But flip side to that, it's certainly that if Jordan devoted a lot of staff, time, and resources into evaluating the potential interest in that, and then it's sold. I mean, there is that risk, too, that he would develop a lot of time into doing the research, reaching out to developers, and, and kind of getting a feel for it, and in the meantime, it's sold.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, yeah, to her point. But I feel like, I guess, for me personally, I think that's probably less than $40,000 taxpayer dollars of, of expense.
Yeah, and we're also, it seems to me like we're, we're giving us the best scenario, and if somebody else buys it, it's the worst scenario. You know, we're going to, if they buy it, they're going to put a garage on it, they're going to hold it for the next 20 years. And we don't know. The, the reality, it could, somebody could buy it and decide they're going to work hard to get, I mean, somebody was interested in putting in a fourplex, even though it's technically not supposed to be there. And. And so I don't, you know, I don't know. I don't, I'm not, it just seems to me that if somebody comes along and buys it, that's not all bad. It's not like they're buying it so that they can build two garages. I mean, I, I would think that'd be unlikely, but...
Well, I do think two garages would be bad, but I think it's unlikely too. But I think multifamily units would be good. So I think that's that, we're missing that in our plan. I mean, we're missing place to move the gals.
But we have to have somebody who develops, uh, multiple.
But I mean, Jordan is in the business of this every day. I don't think he would have thought it was a good idea and brought it if he didn't have some feeling on it. I mean, that's what he does all day, every day.
If we can't reach a consensus, we motion it. How many votes does it take to pass? You know, there's five of us here.
It'd take three votes to, to pass, yeah.
So if somebody wants to motion, then they can. But say otherwise, my consensus is I'd rather wait and see what information we find out.
But actively get, I mean, like, we don't want us just like to die, right? When you're interested in the actual...
If somebody invests in it and it works better for the city, that's fine.
Okay, so, council, if there, we, to make this clear, if there, there can be a motion to, to approve an offer to purchase or you could make an op, you could make a motion to table it or we can reach a consensus that we are not going to take action with the understanding that this will be considered at a later time. So with, with that, council, are there motions or comments?
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion that we purchased the land. I know it's going to go down, but I'll make a motion anyway, so.
Here we have a motion to...
Approve an offer of the purchase of two parcels of land in Union Street. The numbers that Jordan read off forty minutes ago.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? Seeing no second, the motion dies for the lack of a second. And council, I would suggest let's not make a motion to table, let's just not take action. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Councilmember Presley, you look like maybe?
Oh, it, it's a nicety at this point. I, I want more information about feasibility, you know, so...
I guess that was under, I, yes, okay.
Yeah, just as, as long as that's clearly understood, you know, I would, I could easily make a motion to table with that as a...
I just don't, I don't think we need a motion to table or not.
Yeah, as long as we've, we could clearly understood that we want some more feedback about feasibility.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, council. Thank you, Jordan. Okay, we will now turn our attention to item seven. And I like this title, Positive Pressure. Positive Pressure Fan. So welcome to...
Good evening, Mayor of Council. So coming for you, requesting to purchase a positive pressure fan. What that is, is a blower fan that is used as a ventilation tool that the fire department uses to remove smoke, heat and other combustible products from any structures that they've been working on or fighting a fire on or something like, in those, in that realm. Fan allows the firefighters to also perform the task in a, in a safer and more tenable environment. So it helps remove the heat while they're inside, trying to clean up and look for any existing fires. We have an aging gas powered pressure fan that at times is difficult to start. And also because it's gas, it actually adds some CO2 into the area that we're trying to ventilate. Fire department budgeted last year to replace the older gas powered pressure fan this year and we'd like to go with an electric powered pressure fan. They tend to be quieter, they last longer and they're easier to maintain. Additionally, they tend to be more flexible for the fire department and they reduce some of that CO2 gas that they're trying to get out of that structure in the first place. So I obtained three quotes from Mallory Safety and Supply, Danko on Fire Shop and Felfire, the lowest quote came in at two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. This includes the purchase along with the shipping costs as well. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the purchase of one Tempest variable speed electric power blower pressure fan from Mallory Safety and Supply in the amount of two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. And I hope for any questions if you might have.
Thank you, Chief Davis. Some other questions?
I have curiosity. I assume if you respond to a fire or something, you guys have some kind of like ember on a fire truck or something you can plug it into?
They have the ability to hook the electrical lines into the fire trucks. We already have one. The gas blower is almost thirty years old. The electric one that we have is close to twenty years old. So this would just give us two electric ones.
We have generators on all our engines.
Yeah, generators, extension cord.
Further questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, council member, is there a motion to approve the purchase of one Tempest variable speed electric power blower pressure fan from Mallory Safety and Supply LLC in the amount of two thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents? So move?
Second.
There's a motion and second questions on the motion? Seeing no discussion, questions? Ask our city clerk to please call, roll call them.
Councilmembers Presley?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Sanderwick?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. We will now turn our attention to item eleven and ask our administrator if there is need for an executive session this evening?
There is not here.
There is not, thank you. We're going to move to item twelve. I want to mention that on the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, there is a city council retreat and there will be no formal action taken, no votes. But we do, in the past, the council has gotten together to kind of like a study session. More study sessions on, so we plan on doing that on the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh. We want to make a public announcement. So, okay, do we have any other items? You know, further, then I would take a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Have a motion?
Second.
All the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. We are adjourned.